Good evening. It is now 7:00 PM. I would like to call the Monday, March 8th, 2021 Common Council Meeting to order. Clerk Jones, I believe you would like to make some comments regarding the link for this meeting and other expectations.
Okay. Good evening, members of the public. For audio quality, we will be muting everyone not speaking by default to maintain good audio quality for council members and yourselves. If you would like to speak during the meeting on a specific agenda item, please submit your request in the chat. Directions to do so will be listed in the chat. We ask that you provide your full name and your address as those are required for all speakers at in-person meetings. If you would like to be called on during the meeting to provide public input, please insert the following into the chat, and you will be called on during the relevant time for public input. Insert your name, your address, and what you would like to speak on if you would like to speak for or against. You will then be given five minutes to speak. Be sure to unmute yourself prior to giving your remarks. For citizens that wish to speak during the privilege of the floor, please insert the following into the chat, and the council president will call on you during the relevant time for public input. Insert your name and your address, and you will then be given five minutes to speak. And please be sure to unmute yourself prior to giving your remarks.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. Due to the executive order by Indiana Governor Eric Holcomb, the South Bend Common Council meeting will be legally held by way of a virtual meeting by using Microsoft Teams application. Our invocation will be given by Councilman Troy Warner, 4th District Representative.
Thank you, President White. Dear God, we ask you to shine your light on our community, our city, our state, our nation, and our world. We ask that you raise those that are downtrodden, that have slipped or have fallen. We ask that you fill our community with life, energy, love, and passion. That you shield all of our residents from fear, from hunger, and vaccinate our hearts from the diseases of anger, hate, and jealousy. Help us unite. Help us find common ground that exists between us all. Guide this council, our mayor, and all of our city staff to best serve our residents and fulfill our duties as elected officials on this day and every day. Any questions?
Thank you, Councilmember Warner. At this time, we'll go to vote call. Clerk Jones, would you please call the vote?
Yes. Councilmember Davis. Councilmember Davis.
Henry's here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Warner.
Here.
Councilmember Wax.
Present.
Councilmember Niskowski.
Present.
Councilmember Thomas Morgan.
Present.
Councilmember Hammond.
Present.
Vice President McBride.
Present.
President White.
Present.
Nine present.
Thank you so much. Well, now, go to report from the Subcommittee on Minutes. Clerk Jones, would you please read the reports, and that is for January 25th, 2001, and February 8th, 2021, from the Subcommittee on Minutes.
Okay. Report of the Subcommittee on Minutes to the Common Council of the City of South Bend. The Subcommittee has inspected the minutes of January 25th, 2021, February 8th, 2021, meetings of the council and found them to be correct. Therefore, we recommend that the same be approved.
Thank you. I will now obtain a motion to accept the reports from the Subcommittee on Minutes for the January 25th, 2021, and February 8th, 2021, meetings. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion and has been seconded. Clerk Jones, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Wax.
Aye.
Councilmember Niskowski.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond.
Aye.
Vice President McBride.
Aye.
President White.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
The minutes have been accepted. We'll now go to special business, a proclamation awarded by the South Bend Common Council. I'll ask Clerk Jones to read the proclamation, and I know that Councilmember Harry Davis is the sponsor of this wonderful proclamation.
Okay. A proclamation awarded by the South Bend Councilmember honoring the South Bend, Washington Lady Panthers High School basketball team for its success in the 2020-2021 basketball season and in the Indiana State Basketball Tournament.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis?
Yes, I'm here. I'm going to ask Clerk Jones because I can't see who's on and who's not, for whatever reason. But is there any member from the team on this meeting call?
I'm not sure unless they say that they are. I don't have a list of those that are on the team. I'm not sure.
Was notice sent out to everyone?
Yes, they were notified. Let me look in another place.
We just need to get vaccinated so we can get back downtown. I am tired.
See, I'm not sure because I don't have a list in front of me of everybody on the team. So I would say if there is anyone that is on the team or affiliated with Washington Girls Basketball Team, please raise your hand or put something in the chat box. And so that's, I don't see anything.
If not, we may just go ahead and continue over to the next meeting. I mean, it's for them, to honor them. So I would rather them being attendance. I don't know why they're not.
Okay, Councilmember Davis, we'll do that, and we will continue this proclamation until our March 22nd meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you as well. We'll now move to reports from city officers. Invocation, I mean, from Technology Update, Denise Riddell, Chief Information Officer. I need to start wearing my glasses now. I've been trying to hold off, but it's not working. Okay. But thank you so much. We're so glad to have you with us to give us update on innovation and technology and what will happen after your presentation. Each council member will have opportunity to ask two questions. And last time, we had an update from city offices. I started with the at-large members, and this time, I'm going to start with the first district, second district, and go all the way down, so that you know that. So I'll turn it over to you, and also Chair Rachel Thomas Morgan. Would you like to make any comments prior to the presentation?
Just briefly, President White, I just want to thank Ms. Denise Riddell and her team for being here this evening and giving council an update. I believe tonight's focus is going to be on the resident survey, but I'll turn that over to Ms. Lynn Riddell to start us off.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, or good evening, I should say, to everyone. My name is Denise Lynn Riddell. I am the Chief Innovation Officer for the City of South Bend, and I'm head of our Department of Innovation and Technology. And so, as Councilmember Thomas Morgan mentioned, I'll be briefing the council today on the results of the city survey. We conduct this about every two years. This is only the second time we have done the survey. And so it's relatively new addition to city operations, but one that I think is very promising because, obviously, we can't improve anything unless we measure it. So I am going to be sharing the results of that with all the council members today, and I'll try and keep my remarks relatively brief because I think the question portion will be very, I'm sure, very useful for this body. So I'm going to share my screen and actually give an interactive tour of the website where you can actually access the results of the community survey. So if you go to southbendin.gov/communitysurvey, there is a landing page on the city website that has the results of the community survey. And today, I'm going to spend most of the time we have giving you a tour of this interactive dashboard that we built. And this is the work, and this project too, was led by the Business Analytics Team within my department, the Department of Innovation and Technology. That team is in charge of data analytics, open data, as well as process improvement and innovation in the city. So they have a big job, but they worked with an external firm called ETC who does quite a lot of surveying for cities of South Bend size. And they conducted a representative survey of South Bend residents chiefly about city services. So the main goal of the survey is to measure satisfaction across the wide array of city services as well as to take the temperature of resident satisfaction with general quality of life indicators. You know, whether they like the way their neighborhood looks, customer service interactions with the city. We've even asked about COVID response in this most recent survey. So I'm going to give you a brief tour of this dashboard. You can go to it at southbendin.gov/communitysurvey and interact with it yourself, and of course, are free to connect with myself and our Director of Business Analytics, David Finley, who's here on the call today. And we can also, you know, meet with you or provide some more information about the results. So on this dashboard, here's just some background about the community survey. If you scroll through, the first page here just has some of the big overall perception questions we ask of all residents, including questions on, you know, rating South Bend as a place to live, just general quality of life, responses to COVID. I think it's worth mentioning that while, you know, I think that these results of the community survey, generally, we see small decreases from 2018 to 2020. And that's actually in line with decreases or results seen across the country. You know, the cities that ETC partners with have seen moderate decreases in services across the country, likely linked to just decreases in satisfaction and quality of life generally. That being said, we're quite concerned about these gaps and would like to close them. And we also are concerned about these benchmarks. And so if you look over here, you can actually see the comparison to Great Lakes cities in general. And satisfaction on a whole is higher with that benchmark, and that is something that we would also like to close that gap in years to come. And we'll be measuring against that progress. One thing that I think the region can be proud of is that compared to our peers in the Great Lakes, people are quite satisfied with the city and the county's COVID response. So I wanted to point that out. Besides that, though, these are kind of the bigger picture questions that we ask of residents about South Bend as a place to raise children, a place to visit, a place to retire. And so these questions, again, you can look over these more and compare them to 2018 as well as to Great Lakes peers. So here, we have listed satisfaction and priority with various city services. So again, we ask about infrastructure. We ask about policing. We ask about code enforcement. Really, every service in each department, we ask about, one, how much is the resident satisfied with that particular service? And how much of a priority do they see that as in terms of how the city should be spending money and how the city should be allocating its time? So in terms of the service and how important it is, the one that, you know, rose to the top is the maintenance of city streets, sidewalks, and infrastructure. This is actually also the case for 2018. These top three ranked services here, streets, sidewalks, infrastructure, planning and growth, and local codes and ordinances. These are the same top three services that were also flagged in the 2018 survey. So there is some consistency there. On the other side, you also see something similar with the 2018 survey. The overall quality of fire services was also ranked as the service that residents were most satisfied with, in addition to EMS. So when we ask questions about satisfaction with various city services, like fire, like police, like timeliness of trash services, residents have the option to answer whether they're very satisfied, satisfied, neutral, dissatisfied, or very dissatisfied. So in addition to knowing how, on a whole, satisfied residents are, which is indicated by just how much blue is here on this chart, you can also see, you know, how neutral people are, how maybe polarized people feel about a particular issue or service. And so this is a good visual to see what that looks like. So there might be services like, say, how well the city is planning growth, where there's actually quite a lot of neutral sentiment in that. Whereas if you look at something like city efforts to keep you informed about disruptions to trash, very few neutral sentiments around that. People tend to have opinions about that service. So this is probably the most useful tab, especially for council members, and I want to spend a little bit of time here. One very useful thing about this community survey that we do every two years is that in addition to asking about these particular surveys and making sure to survey a number of residents that gives us a certain confidence interval about the results, we also break out the survey results by council district. And so obviously, some members of council serve particular parts of South Bend and others are at large. But mostly, especially in the media and in, you know, just briefs and summaries about this survey, mostly people have been focused on the overall citywide numbers, and those are very important to talk about, especially benchmarking year to year and comparing to peers so that we know what we really need to work on as a city. One very important thing within the city, though, is understanding how satisfaction varies across different districts. And so, for instance, here, you can select a particular question about a particular service. So say bulky item pickup removal services. Or say, you know, condition of major city streets. Right, so you see these blue bars moving, and that actually just shows you, you know, across different districts, not just with the average of citywide, but for each district, what the satisfaction level is. So for this particular question, the condition of major city streets, District 4 has a higher satisfaction rate than, say, District 6. Another good example to look at would be actually housing quality in your neighborhood. This is another question that actually has very different results depending on which district that you're answering from. So Districts 2, District 6, District 1, all noticeably lower than Districts 5 and 4. So I would just encourage council members to look through these. You know, we'd be happy to answer any questions you have right now or get back to you with certain summaries or analytics that would be helpful for you. But this is something we built so that the public and council members can interact with this information in a more useful way. If people prefer to read things, of course, we also have the PDFs online, and these just, you know, summarize everything in a more traditional way and provide some highlights, and people can certainly read those reports. We have the report for 2020 as well as 2018. So I'll take a pause there, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that council members have, and I'll keep this up in case that's a useful thing.
Thank you so much. I'm going to start with First District Representative Kenneth Lee, followed by Second District Representative Henry Davis Jr.
Again, thanks Denise for this presentation. I really don't have any questions, but just, this will be very interesting to be able to go through and find out information, a little more in-depth information for our district. So I think this is a great start to really breaking down the data and information so that we can use it to be able to interact with the public. So thank you.
We'll now go to Councilman Henry Davis Jr. Councilmember?
I don't have anything.
Okay. We'll go down to Third District Representative Sharon McBride.
Thank you, Denise, for your presentation, and President White. Denise, my question is, I know that 3-1-1 calls have been slower, a lot slower. I don't know if, was this due to, can you explain a little bit of why that slowdown has been? Because there has been an increase of services, delayed services or response from 3-1-1, which had usually showed a high turnaround volume, and also like now it impacts trash pickup and things like that. Can you speak a little bit towards that? Those are my questions.
Absolutely. Yeah, no, I'd be happy to. And just to clarify for council members, the survey results technically are separate from 3-1-1, but 3-1-1 is in my department. So I'd be happy to answer that question now and provide some more detailed information to, in writing, if that's helpful for council. I can kind of break it down and follow up with you, Councilmember McBride, but just in general, the recent 3-1-1 delays in the past month are because of the Inquesta turnover. So we've been doing a transition from Navoline to Inquesta for the utility billing solution at the city. And so we've had increased call volume and people, you know, asking, you know, for help in setting up their new account, setting up auto pay. We've been working, 3-1-1 has been working with the utility as well to get some of those answered. But that really has created quite a big call volume bump in the past month just because of the support required with that transition from the old legacy solution to the Inquesta solution.
Thank you. Now, would that have a direct effect on this survey or no? Because this is a newer survey, like for 2020, and it has not made a negative impact, which I think it would going forward.
That's a good question. Yeah, and these survey questions were actually asked in the summer of last year. So if anyone, you know, did experience dissatisfaction with the increased wait times, which I would assume that they would, and we should certainly address that, it wouldn't be reflected in the survey, no.
Thank you. I'll yield.
Thank you, Councilwoman McBride. We'll now go to the Fourth District, Councilman Troy Warner.
Thank you, President White. Always impressed with everything you guys put on. You know, all the stuff that your department does is amazing. I think, is there a way to kind of combine this? And I know that the 3-1-1 people call in, for the most part, because they have problems and they have issues, to kind of merge those data and that numbers? And have we thought about that? And what does that look like? If you've thought about it, or, you know, we can have an offline discussion over a cup of coffee later. But that's just kind of my thought, and thank you.
Yeah. Yes, we have thought about it, and yes, we would like to do that. And so that's actually a project we'd love to undertake because, you know, obviously, the survey speaks to individual residences' perceptions and responses and opinions about city services. And then obviously, the 3-1-1 CRM data that we have catalogs all the requests. I mean, one flaw of 3-1-1 data that actually is a flaw across most cities is that we are very aware, unfortunately, that 3-1-1 is overutilized by more affluent areas of the city and underutilized by residents and areas of the city that are poorer. And that's something that every city realizes, and that's sort of a grain of salt in any kind of CRM 3-1-1 data we experience. Just because, for instance, there are more potholes that are getting called into a certain part of the city. It doesn't mean that that area of the city has worse roads all the time. It just means possibly those residents have more time and ability to call in and report those types of issues. And so, no, to answer your question, Councilperson Warner, yes, we would like to do that. I think that would be very informative. And we are always also seeking ways to understand the limitations of that CRM data to the equity applications.
Thank you, Councilman Troy Warner. We'll now move to Fifth District, Councilman Eli Wax.
Thank you. I don't have any questions. I just wanted to thank you for your work on this and for the presentation. I do look forward to spending some time with this. I think it'll be extremely helpful for all of us on the council as we look at legislative proposals, and especially as we're coming up to budget year. It's extremely important for us to know what our residents and what our citizens really care most about as we focus on them in the coming years. So thank you.
Thank you as well. Councilwoman Sheila Niskowski.
Yeah, thank you, President White, and thank you, Denise, for the presentation. And I did read that report. It was rather lengthy, but I did go through because I wanted to see how they were posing the questions. But what I don't remember is, as far as the 686 total residents, were those picked and then balanced out throughout the whole city? I mean, there was an imbalance of more from one district than the other? And you said this would be every two years. Is that correct? That we'll be doing this again?
That's correct. Yes, every two years. And actually, here on this, on this last screen of the dashboard, you can see where all the respondents live. You're not going to be able to zoom in here and see exact addresses, obviously, because of privacy reasons. But you can see demographic information and summary data about the residents. And we work with ETC to make sure that those surveyed are as representative of the overall population as possible. So you can see the breakdown by gender, by homeowners versus renters, who those people are, where they live, you know, the Latinx community, the Black community, those who identify as other. So you can explore that as well. But we always work with the ETC to strive that this is as representative as possible.
And that number that was sampled was, so if there was 200 from the sixth, the fifth, you took that same equal amount throughout the city?
I'll connect with ETC just to get specifics on the district-by-district method and have that sent over to you guys. But I know this overall goal, every year, their overall goal is to get over, with a city of our size, to get over 600 total, just so we could reach a 95% confidence interval across the city. But I'll confirm the district-by-district internal methodology, just so I have that. I'm characterizing that accurately for you.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Sure presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lori Hammond.
Thank you, President White. Good evening, Denise. Thank you for the presentation. Just one question. With the, many of these concerns and the things that are listed on the survey have to do with particular departments within the city. And I'm wondering if you can just give us some insights. I know this is not part of your job, per se, but if we could get some insights as to perhaps how the city departments are using this as a tool to correct some of the areas of dissatisfaction within the city. to correct some of the areas of dissatisfaction within the city?
Yeah, absolutely. I can't speak for the other department heads, so I'd be happy to coordinate with them to supplement my answer. But I, after we get these community survey results, we do meet with department heads across the city to brief them on the results of the survey. Another thing that we do is we incorporate this into the STAT program at the city. So every quarter, the mayor in partnership with our department and other city departments, we do a performance management meeting where different city leaders and teams track the progress of various stats and priority goals of the city. Everything from increasing diversity in police recruiting to improving the streets and sidewalks projects, to improving the scores that our fire department receives from the state of Indiana. And so these metrics all play into those kind of KPIs that we track in those quarterly meetings. And so our Director of Business Analytics, David Finley, has met with department heads on these results. And in addition, we would like these results to be an important factor as we start to plan out the budget process for 2022.
Good to know. Thank you very much.
Move now to Councilwoman Rachel Thomas-Morgan.
Thank you, President White. Ms. Rydel, thank you very much for this presentation. I found the tool just incredibly useful. It's extraordinary to be able to put that data into something that's so usable for the public and for all of us. Like Councilwoman Niskowski, I'm a traditionalist and read through the entire report. But, so I, I also want to thank your department for the, that, what you do in terms of helping our city to be more transparent. And so publishing this kind of data for the public is a reflection of our commitment to government transparency and appreciate your role in that very much. My question was related to the sample, and I think you already answered it. But I was struck by the number of residents and, you know, overall, it roughly represents less than 1% of our population. So just wondering how the firm gets to that number? I mean, you said 95% confidence rate, but could you say, just how, yeah, how does the firm determine that number? And then I didn't have a chance to look back at 2018 to know what the sample size was.
Yeah, in 2018, I actually looked that up earlier today. In 2018, the sample size was about 700. So a little bit more than this. I mean, I think just anecdotally, I wouldn't be surprised if like, I mean, as time has gone by, it's harder and harder to get representative samples from surveys, especially phone and mail surveys. I think like they've called it like poll fatigue, like the public has experienced a lot of poll fatigue in recent years. And it's been harder to kind of get those representative samples. Yeah, that being said, the benchmark for getting a 95% confidence interval, you know, meaning achieving kind of a three-ish percent, like kind of margin of error, like confidence that, you know, we're about in that ballpark on all the numbers, is at the very least 600 residents for a city of 100,000. And so they're really backwards mapping from that 95% confidence interval goal. For future surveys, we could strive for more responses or kind of even higher confidence interval level. That's something we could opt to do.
Okay. Thank you. In order to get to that, to that number, how many, I mean, how many asks were sent out?
Oh, far more. And actually, I can find out what that number is for you. Yeah.
Okay. Just curious to know how, you know, how many, what multiples of that you had to get, you had to send it out to.
Yeah, I know, I know the process. I can find out that number because I think that's just informative. But I know that the process involves, you know, sending, initially sending the survey by mail, giving people an option to, you know, do it by phone or online, and then also follow-up contact. I know David Finley's on the call. Is there anything else you'd like to add to the ETC methodology, David, on the survey?
Just that they would also be able to follow up in multiple languages. So that was another aspect, specifically Spanish.
Very nice. Thank you, Mr. Finley.
Okay. Well Denise, we'd like to thank you for your presentation. I concur with other council members in regards to the need to drill down a little bit further and see this as a planning tool as we prepare for the upcoming budget season. It'll be interesting, for me, I would like to look at all the different districts and based on the responses, if there are any commonalities, okay? And what are the, you know, the gaps? And just to see exactly how they respond in regards to their level of satisfaction based on those questions. And I would take that a step further. I would actually would want to go and drive just to see for myself. So I think it's an excellent tool, but we need to drill it down a little bit further. And we need to make a decision in regards to how we're going to use the survey. One, you know, we definitely would want to respond to our residents. And I'm willing to bet that a lot of the responses are, we're going to see some commonality in regards to the concerns that they have been sharing over a period of time. The question becomes, how do we respond as a city? But thank you so much. Very interesting. I have not read the entire survey. I'm just halfway through. But thank you so much. And please don't reach out to any council members. I would encourage council members to reach out to you as well. Thank you so much. Have a great evening.
Thank you. You as well. I put the link to the landing page for the survey in the chat here. And please do reach out if you have any questions.
Thank you. Have a great evening as well. We'll now move into the Committee of the Whole. I will entertain a motion to resolve into the Committee of the Whole.
So moved?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and it has been second. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Lee? Councilmember Lee?
He's probably just used to you calling me first.
Well, you know, I have to switch him around. That's according to.
Yeah, right.
He might be on mute. I'll come back. Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee? Councilmember Lee, could you unmute yourself, please? As of now, I have eight ayes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The Committee of the Whole is now in session. This is the portion of the council's meeting where bills are given a second reading and public hearing. I wish to share with you that bills that will be given a second reading and public hearing have been given a first reading and set for committee meeting and public hearing prior to this evening's meeting. In addition, you will hear from the chairperson of the committee where the bill was discussed and the results of their discussion. If the proposed ordinance is a zoning ordinance, a report from the staff will be given. In all other situations, the formal presentation on the proposed ordinance will immediately follow the committee report. The formal presentation shall be untimed. And we are going to start with, I believe, Bill 7221. Clerk Jones, will you please give Bill 7221 a second reading?
Yes. 7221, Public Hearing on an Ordinance of the Common Council of South Bend, Indiana, Amending Ordnance Number 10749-20, Fixing Maximum Salaries and Wages of Deputies and Non-Bargaining Employees Appointed by the City Clerk of the City of South Bend, Indiana for the Calendar Year 2021.
Thank you. Is there a committee report?
Yes, Madam Chair. Bill 7221 was heard in the Personnel and Finance Committee earlier this evening and comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Councilwoman Warner. Is the petitioner present?
Yes, actually that is myself, Dawn Jones, City Clerk, Office on the fourth floor. This is the salary for the CRB Director, and it is capped at $65,000. And once this is passed, then we will move forward with doing the interviews. We do have applications in. And once we hire a director and we commit to the consultant, we will move forward with doing another budget and coming forth with that. So this is just for the salary of $65,000 cap.
Councilmembers, do you have any questions of the petitioner? Anyone? Do you have a hand up? Councilwoman Sharon McBride?
Hi, thank you. Thank you Clerk Jones for the presentation. May I ask for a copy of the list of applicants?
Yes, actually, that's something that's going to come up under New Business because all the council will get the applications and we will have to take an executive time to screen the applicants.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Is there any other council members that have a question? Okay. If not, I'm going to go to the public hearing portion. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill 7221?
Okay, I'm looking down the list, and I do not see anyone from the public that is wishing to speak in favor of Bill 7221.
Okay, thank you. And I do have to ask if there is anyone present wishing to speak in opposition of Bill 7221?
I don't see anyone from the public wishing to speak in opposition of Bill 7221.
Okay, thank you Clerk Jones. At this point then, the hearing on Bill 7221 is now, yes, Councilwoman Warner?
I just wanted to make a comment once we got there.
Oh, I thought you was trying to stop me before I closed.
No, no, no. I'm sorry. I got too early.
That's okay. So at this point, I am going to close the public hearing on Bill 7221. So council members, you do wish to make a statement regarding 7221? Councilwoman Warner, you wish to make a statement?
I do. I just want to thank the Clerk's Office. I know this is a lot of work. We're basically creating a whole new department here, and this is just one smaller step. And we'll kind of continue to make progress. And I'm excited to hear we're setting a meeting to review applications and soon get the applications out for the Review Board themselves later and figure out a budget and policies and all that that comes with it. So I just want to commend your team and thank you for all your work on it.
Thank you. Is there any other council members wishing to make a statement regarding Bill 7221? Okay. I do not see anybody wishing to make a statement, so I would like to now entertain a motion regarding Bill 7221.
I would like to make a motion that Bill 7221 be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Okay, thank you. There has been a motion and it's been properly seconded. Clerk Jones, could you please take the roll call?
Yes. Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
What happened to Pastor Lee?
I think it's a... I'll see if I can contact him via the phone.
I'll just move forward. President White?
Aye.
Okay, as of now, it's eight ayes.
Thank you.
I am so sorry.
Okay, did you get my text?
Yes, I am so sorry. I was saying, and it wasn't doing anything. I'm so sorry.
Okay. So, did you hear the last motion?
No, I didn't.
Okay. That the last motion was to a favorable move to full council for Bill 7221, which is the one for the CRB Executive Director, is your vote, aye or nay?
Aye.
Okay. Now we have nine ayes. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we are now going to move on to Bill 7521. So Clerk Jones, will you please give Bill 7521 a second reading?
Yes. 7521, Public Hearing on an Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, Appropriating Additional Funds for Certain Departmental and City Services Operations for the Year 2021. $123,530 from General Fund Number 101, $308,000 from Parks and Recreation Fund Number 201, $2,998,275 from the DCI Federal Grant Fund Number 212, $200,000 from the Local Road and Street Fund Number 251, $51,241 from the Human Rights Federal Grant Fund Number 258, $386,146 from COVID-19 Response Fund Number 264, $420,000 from Local Road and Bridge Grant Numbers 265, $250,000 from the MVH Restricted Fund, $48,600 from the COPS More Grant Fund Number 295, $10,000 from the Consolidated Building Fund Number 600, and $6,990,000 from the Industrial Revolving Fund Number 754.
Okay, thank you. Is there a committee report?
Yes, Madam Chair. Earlier this evening, the Personnel and Finance Committee held a hearing on Bill 7521, the Quarterly Appropriations Bill. And that bill passed out of the committee with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Councilwoman Warner. Is the petitioner present? And please state your name and address for the record.
Mr. Park?
Yes, thank you. Thank you Chairwoman Niskowski, Dan Parker, City Controller. Office is on the 12th floor of the County City Building. So here we have the first of the two normal quarterly budget adjustment bills. So this one is the additional appropriations requests for council. As we talked about in committee this afternoon, the overall amount of the appropriations request is fairly large. You can see it down here at the bottom at $11.7 million. But if you actually dig down into that number, about $10.7 million of that $11.7 million is what I would classify as budget cleanup types of items. So the bulk of it is $6.9 million, almost $7 million appropriated for the loan portion of the RLF II award, which was awarded from the EDA of the federal government. This just allows us to appropriate, or to actually give out those loans to small businesses that were awarded from the government. And then the other large portion of it is the reappropriation of CDBG and ESG funds that we received in 2020 that were not yet spent as of the end of 2020. So this is money that we were allocated and will be reimbursed to the city and also was already appropriated in 2020. And we're just asking council to reappropriate that. So that's about $10.7 of the $11.7 million is either... So that's about $10.7 of the $11.7 million is either administrative cleanup or supported by a new revenue source within the budget. Of the other $1 million, about $850,000 here in the middle is related to capital projects, for, in this case, exclusively streets. The first appropriation of $200,000 and then the last of $420,000 are related to cleaning up some final items from 2020 streets projects, either change orders or finalizing the community crossing grant. We actually maximized the utilization of that grant, so the state offers a match of up to $1 million. So we maximize that by spending the full $2 million on streets in 2020. And so this just allows us to close out that 2020 grant. And then this middle appropriation of $250,000 is really in anticipation of the conversation that will be had at the next council meeting regarding the issuance of a bond to fund streets projects, which we've talked about a few times with council, both during the budget process for 2021 and then afterwards. And then I believe, actually, next week, the Public Works Committee has a meeting to discuss the projects funded from that. And then the remaining portion of about $200,000 is up here at the top. The vast majority of that is related to the previous bill that you just heard Clerk Jones talk about, and the appropriation of some funding for the Community Police Review Office, both the salary of $65,000 for the Director, plus the benefits for that Director, and then a consulting engagement and some money for building out the office space for that Director. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions council might have.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Parker. Councilmembers, do you have any questions?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Controller, you did such a great job this afternoon explaining the $6.5 million or $6.9 million in the revolving loan fund. Can you do that again for us, for the folks that missed the earlier meeting, and explain where that money is coming from and what that money is going through?
Yes, absolutely. So this is money that the City of South Bend was awarded from the federal government to establish a second revolving loan fund. So the city has had an industrial revolving loan fund that we've managed for many years, several decades, in fact, that gives loans, low-interest loans, to small businesses in the community and startup businesses in the community. And we manage those loans within the city. This is an additional award that allows us to actually almost double the corpus of those loans that we can give out. And the appropriation is just allowing us to actually go through the process of making those loans.
Thank you, sir.
Is there any other council members that would like to ask a question? Seeing none, I'm going to move on to the public portion of the meeting. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill 7521? Excuse me.
This is Dawn. I don't see anyone from the public expressing interest to speak in favor of Bill 7521.
Thank you. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition of 7521? I do see a hand.
Actually, there's Councilmember Hammond's hand.
Mm-hmm.
But I don't see anyone from the public expressing interest to speak in opposition of Bill 7521.
Okay, thank you, Clerk Jones. At this point, I'm going to close the public portion on Bill 7521, and I will go back to the council members if they would like to make a statement. And Councilwoman Lori Hammond, you would like to make a statement?
Thank you. Mr. Parker, moving forward as we work toward the budget for 2022, am I correct in assuming that the entire CRB budget will be laid out for that budget period?
For 2022, is that...
Yeah.
Yes, I believe that's the intention. And obviously, that will be a big part of the 2022 budget process, is to work with the administration, with the Clerk's Office, and obviously with council to determine the right budget for the entirety of the year. Hopefully, we'll have a director at that time who can provide feedback as well. But yeah, I believe that that is the intention, that during the process, it will establish the entirety of the budget for the year.
Great, thank you.
Is there any other council members that wish to make a statement regarding Bill 7521? If not, I would like to see if someone would like to make a motion regarding Bill 7521?
I make a motion to send to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
Bill 7521.
There's been a motion. The motion and the bill has been seconded. Clerk Jones, could you please call the roll for Bill 7521?
Yes. Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. We are going to move on to Bill 7621. Would you please give Bill 7621 a second reading?
Yes. 7621, Public Hearing on an Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, for Budget Transfers for Various Departments Within the City of South Bend, Indiana for the Year 2021.
Thank you. Is there a committee report?
There is, Madam Chair. Earlier this evening, the Personnel and Finance Committee held a public hearing on Bill 7621, the Quarterly Budget Transfer Bill, and the committee sends that bill to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman Warner. The petitioner I see is present. Mr. Parker, if you could state your name and address for the record before...
Yes, thank you, Chair Nizgatsky. Dan Parker, City Controller, Office on the 12th floor of the County City Building. As Clerk Jones was reading, I realized that the title of this bill said it's for budget transfers for various departments, but it is this quarter only one single department, and fairly straightforward. The Streets Department would like to move some money around to purchase a walk-behind paint machine. This does not increase or decrease the overall budget, but I'm happy to answer any questions that council members might have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Parker. Is there any questions from the council members on Bill 7621? Any questions? Okay, I don't see any questions from the council, so I'm going to go to the public hearing portion of the meeting. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill 7621?
There is no one from the public that is expressing interest to speak in favor of this bill.
Thank you. Clerk Jones, is there anyone present wishing to speak in opposition of Bill 7621?
There is no one present to speak, from the public, to speak in opposition of Bill 7621.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. At this point, the public hearing on Bill 7621 is now closed. Councilmembers, do you wish to make a statement regarding this bill? 7621. If no one wishes to make a statement, I will now entertain a motion regarding Bill 7621?
Chair, I'd like to move that we send Bill 7621 to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
Okay, there has been a motion, and it has been seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll for Bill 7621?
Yes. Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you, Clerk Jones, and thank you, Mr. Parker. Okay, I will entertain a motion to rise from the committee of the whole and report back to the full council.
It's been moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, could you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes. Thank you. The full council is now back in session. This portion of our meeting where bills are given a third reading and actions taken regarding bills that were heard during the committee of the whole. Clerk Jones, would you please give Bill 72-21 a third reading? Yes. 7221, Third Reading on an Ordinance of the Common Council of South Bend, Indiana, amending ordinance number 10749-20, fixing maximum salaries and wages of deputies and non-bargaining employees appointed by the City Clerk of the City of South Bend, Indiana for the calendar year 2021. Thank you, Clerk Jones. Councilwoman Sheila Nizgatsky, is there a recommendation from the committee of the whole regarding Bill 72-21?
Yes, President White. Bill 7221 was voted on as a favorable recommendation unanimously.
Thank you. I will now entertain a motion regarding Bill 72-21.
I move for passage of Bill 7621.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion, and it has been seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes, I just want to clarify that it's 7221, and the roll is Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride? Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes. Bill 72-21 has passed. Clerk Jones, will you please give Bill 75-21 a third reading? Yes. 7521, Third Reading on an Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, Appropriating Additional Funds for Certain Departmental and City Services Operations for the Year 2021, of $123,530 from General Fund Number 101, $308,000 from Parks and Recreation Fund Number 201, $2,998,275 from the DCI Federal Grant Fund Number 212, $200,000 from the Local Road and Street Fund Number 251, $51,241 from the Human Rights Federal Grant Fund Number 258, $386,146 from COVID-19 Response Fund Number 264, $420,000 from Local Road and Bridge Grant Number 265, $250,000 from the MVH Restricted Fund, $48,600 from the Cops More Grant Fund Number 295, $10,000 from the Consolidated Building Fund Number 600, and $6,990,000 from the Industrial Revolving Fund Number 754. Thank you, Clerk Jones. Councilwoman Sheila Nizgatsky, is there a recommendation for this bill coming from the committee of the whole?
Yes, President White. Bill 7521 was sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation and a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Now entertain a motion regarding Bill 75-21.
I'd like to move for passage.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion that has been seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll? Yes. Vice President McBride? Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes. Bill 75-21 has passed. Clerk Jones, will you give Bill 76-21 a third reading? Yes. 7621, Third Reading on an Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, for Budget Transfers for Various Departments Within the City of South Bend, Indiana for the Year 2021. Councilwoman Sheila Nizgatsky, is there a recommendation from the committee of the whole?
Yes, President White. Bill 7621 was sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation, and it was a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Is there a motion regarding Bill 76-21?
Motion for passage?
Is there a second to that motion? We have a motion, and it's been seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll? Yes. Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes. Thank you. Bill 76-21 has passed. We're now moving into the resolution portion of our meeting. All bills that have been filed as resolutions will be heard at this time. At this time, I would ask Clerk Jones to please read Resolution 21-06. 2106, A Resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend Designating Certain Areas Within the City of South Bend, Indiana, Commonly Known as Intersection of Nipps Parkway and Mayflower Road, South Bend, Indiana, An Economic Revitalization Area For Purposes of a Five-Year Personal Property Tax Abatement For Clay's Candy. Is there a committee report?
Yes, President White. Resolution Bill Number 21-06 was heard in Community Investment Committee this afternoon and is being sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Do we have a presenter?
Yes, this is Dan Buckenmeyer, Director of Business Development, and I think I was just given control. Thank you. Office is on the 14th floor of this building, I'm sorry, of the County City Building. My home does not have a 14th floor. Yes, so we are thrilled to be here to present Clay's Candy and their plans for a relocation and expansion here in South Bend. And if it pleases the council, I'm going to present kind of jointly for 2106 and 2108, but then I'll just come back to the individual votes, if that's all right.
Mr. Buckenmeyer, I would have to entertain a motion from council members to hear Resolution 21-6, 21-08 together for purposes of the public hearing.
Right.
Make a motion to hear Resolution 2106 and 2108 together for the purposes of the public hearing. However, the votes shall be separately done.
Thank you. Is there a second? We have a motion that's been seconded. Clerk Jones, will you call the roll? Yes. Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
President White?
Aye. Clerk, before you would continue, Mr. Buckenmeyer, Clerk Jones, will you please read Resolution 21-08, please?
Okay. 2108, A Resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend Designating Certain Areas Within the City of South Bend, Indiana, Commonly Known as Intersection of Nipps Parkway and Mayflower Road, South Bend, Indiana, An Economic Revitalization Area For- For Purposes of a Nine-Year Real Property Tax Abatement For GFC Holdings LLC.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Buckenmeyer.
Yes, thank you. I think that will streamline things for us. So, Clay's Candy was founded in a garage here in South Bend back in 1919. Uh, so they recently celebrated 100 years in our city. Uh, Jerome Clay's, the grandfather of the current president and owner Greg Clay's, who's going to join us in a moment, uh, actually founded the, the, uh, company in that garage back in 102 years ago. So it's a, it's a wonderful South Bend legacy company. Um, I'm sure many of you are familiar with their, their, uh, wide range of hard candies and, and, and all the flavors. Um, uh, their gourmet peanut brittle and of course, the, uh, holiday staple of Chocolate Charlie. Um, they have been located at 525 South Taylor, it's the building pictured to the right there, since 1941. So, anyone who might not be immediately familiar with where that would be, if you imagine Four Winds Field, they're kind of right behind Home Plate and across the street, if you will. So, uh, several decades at that location, um, have been, uh, really kind of bursting out at the seams. They're landlocked, there's no room to grow, uh, or expand their plant, really, at that current location. And, uh, Clay's has been working with the, the city and others for several years now, trying to find just the right location, which they, I think we finally, confident we, we find the, uh, perfect location. They're asking for some assistance in the move and significant investment that they're making to, uh, head out to Nymphs Road, as was noted, uh, in, uh, 21-06. So, on Nymphs Road, uh, and I'll show you a map in a few moments, um, here are some renderings done by Panzika, uh, our local firm Panzika, uh, that, uh, have been working with, uh, Clay's on the design. For a 45,000 square foot building, this will nearly double the size of their, um, uh, current facility. Um, and as we'll learn, it's also going to really, uh, have the opportunity more than double their output. So about five acres, room to grow, uh, in the future as well, and, uh, lots of great space there. So, um, that is the, the, uh, very high level on the personal property abatement that we are recommending. And then the personal property abatement, uh, uh, commonly utilized for capital equipment. Um, oh, I forgot to mention the amount, uh, there, there is a significant investment going into, um, both property and, uh, building and land. Uh, over, uh, nearly 6 million, $5,720,000, uh, in that part of the investment. And then another 2.4 million in investment in new capital equipment. So, lines for, uh, uh, making the candy, um, uh, other elements like, uh, steam generators, dust collectors, syrup tanks, piping, and of course warehousing elements like pa, pipe, uh, excuse me, pallet racking and such. So, very significant investment. When we look at the, um, uh, property side, again, as I promised, here's a map showing Nymphs Road, uh, and the, the tollway is right where they're, they're located in the highlighted area there. Um, great tollway frontage, so we hope they'll get some signage out there and those 100,000 or so people that drive by every day will know where their Clay's Candy comes from and, so here in South Bend. Uh, it's a nine-year phase-in on that real property abatement. They'll recognize a benefit of, and remember, these are all estimates. We don't know exactly where the assessment will fall when it, when that project is finished and the assessor's team goes out there. But we estimate the benefit at about 780,000. Um, the, it is a phase-in over those nine years, so they will pay a little bit more each year. So during the period of that phase-in, they'll pay about $400,000 in taxes. Um, and we estimate that they will be, uh, leveled off then at about 132,000 a year post-abatement is the full taxable amount, just on the property tax alone. Um, it will, uh, uh, the ROI on, on the, what we have abated will, will turn, uh, in the 12th year. On the personal property side, on the right there, it's a standard five-year phase-in. Um, the, uh, benefit or abatement recognized will be around 143,000. Um, they, it is again a phase-in, so they'll pay a little bit more each year on those. Um, about 27,000 during the course of the abatement and somewhere in the neighborhood of 30,000 a year post-abatement. And, uh, uh, the ROI kicks in, in the ninth year. So both of them, about three years post-abatement, will be, um, fully contributing, uh, with the payback. So again, uh, in total, the two, uh, abatements, I'm sorry, the, 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 private investment enabled by the abatements is, uh, over north of $8 million. 33, uh, at least 33 new and retained jobs. We hold a lot of confidence, you know, we, as we've always said, we are very conservative about how many new jobs we, we talk about and have a feeling that once they start really kicking here and, and, uh, doubling their production, we're going to see, uh, uh, more jobs than that. Um, and then an ongoing legacy here in South Bend of 100-plus years. They did look in other places. Uh, they did, uh, um, consider other spots, but South Bend is home. So with that, I'll pass it over to Mr. Clay's to say a few words. Uh, Greg, uh, if you don't mind giving your name and address and then sharing whatever I may have missed, please.
Yes, thank you, Dan, and thank you, uh, council members to invite me into the, uh, council meeting and for the opportunity to speak with you. Uh, this is Greg Clay's, Clay's Candy. Uh, you want the office, uh, address?
Sure, sure.
Office address is here, it's 525 South Taylor Street, South Bend, Indiana. And, uh, we've been at this location since 1941 with one expansion, uh, at this current location. This is probably our, though, our current location is probably about our fourth, uh, building, but always moved into used buildings. So this, this huge project is the first of its kind for a brand-new candy factory for. So we're extremely excited, as you can well imagine, after a century of, of, uh, making candy. And this building, we think will, uh, help us get started here in the next century of making candy and for generations to come. And it will also offer some expansion room, the way the building's going to be designed, so that we can expand west or north in the future, if needed be. Because we're landlocked here and, uh, we've experienced landlocked and we don't want to be in that position again. Because our old-fashioned hard candy business has grown and COVID has just made it go crazy as far as more orders we can fill. We've probably got about a 20-week backlog, which is unheard of in our business. Uh, but the abatement is very important to us, uh, because this is such a big project for our small business, for growing and want to continue to grow and we have to grow to be efficient, to compete in the United States and, uh, also the foreign companies that make candy in Mexico, Canada, China, that are coming into the United States duty-free. Uh, you know, that'll help, uh, uh, in the financing part of the project, obviously, to give us some time to get up and continue to grow and I'm sure we'll be adding more new jobs in the long term.
That's great. Greg, uh, we can stop there if you want and, uh, allow the council to open up for questions.
All right.
I'm going to open up. Thank you, Mr. Clay's, for your presentation as well as for your continued support and investment in our, uh, community. I'm going to open it up for council members for questions and this will be in charge to the two resolutions, Resolution 21-06 and 21-08. Councilmember Henry Davis.
Right. Mr. Buckenmeyer, are you still available?
Yes, sir.
Is this particular building in a TIF district?
Uh, the new building?
Yes, sir.
Uh, yes, in fact, both are, the, the, the old building and the new building, so both in River West TIF.
Oh, okay, it stands over there.
Yes, sir.
Is there any idea of what happens when this property is vacated?
Uh, just to be clear, you're talking about the, the former property?
The current one, well, yeah, former.
Right. Uh, great question, uh, and I prepared for it. Uh, the existing location actually is, it's very interesting. The property that, uh, Clay's, uh, owns, um, actually includes both the building that you see circled in red on the left and part of the parking lot for Four Winds Field on the right. So because of that, um, and as much as anything, because of the criticality of the, the city maintaining that consistency of, uh, uh, having the parking space there and, and, um, uh, uh, not having someone sneak in and, and grab that, we're going to, we've already have, uh, uh, an agreement in place with, uh, Clay's to purchase the existing, uh, uh, facility as well as that parking area. The parking area will be, uh, now this is pending approval from, uh, Redevelopment Commission, but, um, this is our plan so that the parking area can be deeded back over to VPA, uh, the Park District, which owns the rest of the entire surrounding area around the ballpark. Um, and then we will work to remarket and repurpose the, the building on the west side of Taylor Street.
Okay, my last question, then I'd like a really quick comment. How, how much did you purchase that parking lot for?
Uh, that hasn't been determined yet. Well, again, that will go to Redevelopment Commission.
Okay. Well, I'm just steady paying attention to where development happens. Uh, it's usually happening within these TIF districts that has been going on for a considerable amount of time. I just want to, uh, just put something in your ear and also in the council heart, members' hearts. Um, we have to start looking at, if there's any opportunities in the future of even probably TIF-ing. Uh, if we're only going to continue to grow in areas that are within TIF districts, we're going to hollow out the city and that's, this is going to be the end of it. So I, I think that we have to really start paying attention to where these developments are happening at. And I get it, it's an incentive, but just because it is, it's an incentive, doesn't mean that you, uh, get rid of the entire farm. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember Davis. Councilmember Kenneth Lee.
Yes, uh, thank you, uh, President White and, and Dan and, uh, Greg. Um, we did have the opportunity to tour the, uh, candy, candy, uh, facility. And Greg, can you just talk to everybody about, you know, they are literally using every inch of that building to, to produce candy and to produce, uh, uh, taffy, uh, um, I'm sorry, it's not taffy, it's what is it?
Peanut brittle. You got to see peanut brittle.
We got, we got to have warm peanut brittle, it was amazing. Uh, can you talk to them about, you know, the, why it's so important for this expansion as far as, um, like you said, you're 20 weeks back ordered on stuff and how significant this is going to be for, uh, your workers and for the company?
Well, it's very, very significant because in our entire history, I've never gone through a, a period like COVID-19 as well as the year before, 2019. Uh, and then this new equipment just won't fit in our existing building. It would have, if, it would have been great if I had a bigger building right here. I would have put the new equipment right in this building, but it, it literally won't fit because it's a second line. We have one line here, but we're going to have two lines so that we can double our capacity on the old-fashioned hard candies. And then the rest of the, our production and building is devoted to a lot of handcrafted type confections, like the old-fashioned peanut brittle and our old-fashioned fudges that we make still. Handcrafted, hand-cut into, and then they are wrapped on wrapping machines. Um, that, uh, they're still hand-fed. And then our Chocolate Charlie that we make, that's all handcrafted on tables. And we need more stainless steel tables to make these handcrafted kettle-cooked confections. Uh, and we don't have that room in this existing facilities. Uh, so, uh, it's, it's imperative that we do something soon. And that's why we started looking, but we've been looking, like Dan said, for three years.
Thank you. Appreciate that response as well. Thank you, Councilmember Lee. Uh, council members, do you have any questions regarding the two resolutions that you would like to ask either Mr. Buckenmeyer or the, uh, present, I mean, the petitioner, Mr. Clay's? I do not see any hands up. I'm going to now go to the puppet portion. Clerk Jones? I see a hand that just went up.
Okay, it's Allison. Allison, please, um, unmute yourself and state your name and your address for the record, please.
Is this for the public hearing portion?
Yes.
And then this, we're at the point that, uh, we're asking those who would want to speak in support of these two resolutions at this time, and I did see the hand of Allison.
Right.
Um, I'm actually to speak in opposition. Should I wait then?
Yes, please. Okay, I'm going to ask one more time if there's anyone, uh, in, uh, waiting to speak in support of Resolutions 21-06 or 21-08.
Okay, I, I do not see anyone, um, wishing to speak in support of 21-06 or 21-08.
Thank you. I'll now go to the second portion of the public hearing. Is there anyone present wishing to speak in opposition? And I do know that, um, Allison, uh, had raised her hand to speak on this portion of the public hearing. We do ask that you state your name and address.
My name is Allison Meinsberg. I live at 2633 Arrowhead Drive. Um, I certainly support Clay's Candy. I have some other hard candies sitting in my kitchen right now. Um, my concern is just in general with taking, um, the area of Nymphs Parkway, which is well-served by the toll road and has great frontage, um, and classifying that as an economic revitalization area, um, providing tax abatements on that while then the city is proposing to purchase an existing tax-generating building, um, through TIF funds. And, um, it seems that there's a pattern of the city sometimes overpaying. For instance, a recent railroad, uh, line was purchased for over 60, or for what came out to about $60,000 an acre. And I'm not sure where the tax money is coming from for all of these, um, plans, um, if we're providing abatements for some of the best locations in the city for development.
Thank you, Ms. Allison, and, uh, we, we will go back to the petitioner and/or Mr. Buckenmeyer. They will have five minutes to, uh, respond to your, uh, question and we call that rebuttal. But before we go back, I want to make sure, Clerk Jones, is there anyone else present wishing to speak in opposition?
Um, President White, that exhausts our list.
Thank you. The public hearing portion is now closed. Mr. Buckenmeyer or Mr. Clay's, would you like to respond?
Uh, I'll jump in if you don't mind. This is Dan Buckenmeyer. Um, I, I guess the, the, um, the tax abatement, um, I, I'm, I'm trying to zero in on the concern in terms of, uh, yes, this is, uh, on Nymphs Road, a, a desirable spot for business, of course, that's why they want to be there. Um, right now, it is, uh, uh, a vacant lot. Uh, I'd say greenfield, but it's covered in trees and, and mounds of dirt and so on. So a lot of work is going to go into making it buildable. Um, it is not, uh, tax-positive, it's probably, I, I don't know the exact number, but probably just a few, uh, you know, if, a thousand, a, a thousand or so dollars a mu, uh, year in tax revenue. Um, this project will event, will, uh, when complete, we estimate take that site up to $132,000 per year, um, just in real tax, uh, um... um, just in real tax, uh, um, uh, property tax, uh, revenue. Now, um, I'll, I'll, I'll juxtapose that a few ways, uh, so, um, presently, uh, Mr. Clay's at his current location only paying about, uh, $7,000 a year in property taxes. So it's going to be a tremendous, uh, uptick in, uh, uh, tax revenue from this business. Um, and I see that two ways, one is, um, Mr. Clay's is going to make a, a $8 million investment in this new plant, uh, in this new location, uh, hire a bunch of new people, and to saddle him with a, uh, a $130,000 tax bill immediately after, um, I would argue wouldn't be that responsible as a community for, um, I'll ask, you know, once we ask him to make that investment in our community, so, um, what the tax abatement does is it phases that in, it, it softens the blow, if you will, of that, gives him time to ramp up, uh, pay off some of the, the, um, uh, bills on, on both the build of the location and the, the purchase of the materials. And it's important to note, even with the abatement, um, his property tax bill will be, uh, more with abatement on the new location than, uh, his current, he pays in his current space in, uh, the second year, so, um, he's still going to be paying taxes, the, the company will still be paying taxes. Um, the city will be, uh, very much revenue positive on this. Um, and we will, in fact, repurpose that other location and then we will have uh, both locations, uh, tax positive, so it's really a win-win. Um, we're thrilled to see, uh, Mr. Clay's and the, uh, company invest at this level uh, in, in South Bend, having chosen South Bend over Plymouth and Nalls and other, other potential locations. Um, they're gonna continue, I mean, in a COVID environment to retain these jobs is also critically important, so it's, uh, there, there are just almost more wins than I can, I could keep going on, but, uh, I'll stop there.
Thank you, Mr. Buckenmeyer.
My pleasure.
At this time, councilmembers, do you have any comments? Before I would ask for a motion first regarding Resolution 21-06. Councilman Kenneth Lee? Followed by Councilmember Eli Wax?
Yes, I would just like to say that again, uh, Chocolate Charlie has been a favorite of our family for forty years, uh, ever since I can remember. Um, it was great touring the facility, seeing how much they have used every inch of the building and to where they have no other choice but to expand, to see that they have a 20-week, um, 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 back order on products, and then, uh, he had even shared with us that, uh, that he had turned down half a million dollars of, of, of business because they just could not physically produce it, so for him to go, to, for Clay's Candy to be in our community for over 100 years and then decide to expand and, um, double its capacity, it's a great South Bend story, and, and that's what makes it very exciting for me is that there are so many great South Bend companies that have come and go, gone, and so now that we're able to, uh, be in a position to help one continue to, into the next 100 years, I'm very excited about it, and again, um, it's just a great, great South Bend story that needs to be told and needs to be experienced by people, so.
Thank you. The next councilperson that had their hands up, and I'll call them in this order, uh, Councilmember Eli Wax, followed by Councilmember Henry Davis, and Councilwoman Rachel Thomas-Morgan. And hopefully, I acknowledge everyone at this time, Councilmember Eli Wax, followed by Councilman Henry Davis, Councilwoman Rachel Thomas-Morgan, and Councilmember Troy Warner. Councilmember Wax? Councilmember Wax?
I guess I should turn my, uh, you know. I just wanted to thank you, Dan, and, and thank you, Mr. Clay's. It, it always gives my heart joy to see South Bend companies being successful and uh, appreciating their community and constantly giving back and wanting to make their growth here for, uh, I think as Mr. Clay said, for generations to come. Uh, so I just wanted to thank you, uh, for your investment, and I look forward to seeing them factory when it's ready.
Thank you. Councilman Henry Davis?
Thank you, President White. Um, I am totally gonna support this particular project, but as I said earlier about the TIF districts and the expansion, um, I, I, I find it always odd that we really do a very good job of committing to companies that decide to, uh, move here or expand here or what, what have you, and we, we applaud the fact that we have these great incentives of a tax abatement and just so many other things, uh, that these companies get, private partnerships, private-public partnerships, whatever you may from the TIF district. But one thing I wanna just, you know, um, point out really quick, our job, my job as a councilman is to make sure that this city is expanding tax base and finding areas where we can like, uh, accumulate more taxes so that we can deliver better city services. Right now, the city is hemorrhaging, uh, money and also population with school closings. Uh, we're, we're, we're in an issue right now with the budget, uh, I think everybody has been present during this past year talking about the amount of money that we're gonna be losing, not only because of COVID, but because of where we were at before COVID hit, and just so many other things, and I think that we really have to start paying attention to our bottom line, not the companies. They're doing a great job, they have their accountants, they have their business plan, they have their, their partners at the bank, they're, they're gonna be fine. And that's great, but if we do not start looking at the city the same way that the companies are looking at their books, we're gonna have a city. And so I, again, I applaud Clay's Candy for their investment and their time in South Bend, Indiana. I would have loved to tour your, uh, business, uh, you're in the second district, I'm the second district representative. Never got an invitation, that's fine, hope I get an invitation to the next one. But at the end of the day, if we are not expanding our, 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 uh, tax base, if we are not, um, looking at the priority of ensuring, uh, more dollars of revenue coming into our city coffers, we're not doing anyone a service, no one. The taxpayers, the businesses, no one, we're not doing anyone a service, I, uh, I yield.
Thank you, Councilmember Davis, Councilwoman Rachel Thomas-Morgan, followed by Councilmember Troy Warner.
Thank you, President White, once again, thank you, Mr. Buckenmeyer and Mr. Clay's, uh, for your presentation. But Mr. Clay's, thank you for your commitment to staying in South Bend, in our community, and for preparing, um, our community for another 100 years of, of, um, of giving back. I, um, I was privileged to be able to speak with two of your employees, um, and wanna thank you for your commitment to a diverse workforce that you have there. My sense from talking to these two employees is that you have a very loyal workforce as well. One having worked there, a woman having worked there for 16 years, and a gentleman working there for 30 years, um, both who share that they enjoyed their work immensely and found it very satisfying. Um, so I wanna thank you for your commitment, uh, for the amount of, of dollars you are investing in this property and to expanding your company. Um, and thank you for the future tax dollars that you'll be bringing into this community. Uh, we look forward to, um, the company growing, having this second line and, um, and being able to, uh, to meet the demand um, that you've seen over the past few years and, um, and to grow the company into the future.
Thank you. Councilman Troy Warner?
Thank you, President White. I'll try not to, uh, uh, kinda duplicate what's already been said, but I, I, I do wanna just take a second and thank, uh, the Clay's family, Mr. Clay's and the whole family for their dedication and their reinvestment to the community. Um, you, you know, I, I, I kinda did some quick math, but it sounds like very shortly his property taxes are gonna triple, uh, so he's gonna be making a major reinvestment back into the community. I think that, um, you know, it, it's other people have said in, in my house, uh, um, it, it's not Christmas or Easter or Thanksgiving or Election Day or New Year's Day or anything without Chocolate Charlie and, uh, uh, some Clay's fudge, so, uh, you know, when, when you take a hard look at the numbers and a no-nonsense look at, uh, at, at what's happening here, uh, we've got a, a, an $8 million investment still within the city, uh, within the TIF district that is going to, uh, drastically increase the tax base. Um, and then those TIF dollars can be recaptured and put back in and leveraged for projects, uh, i- i- within that district. Um, I, I think this project, there's win-win-win-win in this project, uh, it makes a ton of sense, and, uh, I'm very happy that the city can assist Clay's as they, uh, move on and, uh, continue their next 100 years. Thank you.
Thank you. I do not see any other councilmember, uh, hands, hands up or hand up. Uh, so we're now going to move back to Resolution 21-06, and we'd like to entertain a motion regarding Resolution 2106.
I'd make a motion to send Resolution 2106 to the full council with a favorable recommendation. No, I'm sorry, we're in Resolution.
We have Resolution, yes.
I move for passage.
Is there a second to that motion? We have a motion and it's been seconded, Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Resolution 21-06 has been adopted. Uh, we'll entertain a motion regarding Resolution 21-08.
I move for passage of Resolution 21.08.
I second.
We have a motion and it's been seconded, Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you, Resolution 21-08 has been adopted. Uh, Clerk Jones, will you please read Resolution 2111, and thank you, Mr. Clay's. You, you're more than happy to stay with us until the end of the meeting if you would like to.
You're muted, Greg.
Okay, well, we'll move on to, uh, uh, Clerk Jones, will you please read, uh, Resolution 21-11?
Yes. 2111, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, establishing an audit committee responsible for the certified public accountant selection procedures under Indiana Code 5-11-1-20, 24.4.
Thank you, Clerk Jones, is there a committee report?
Yes, earlier this evening, Madam President, the Personnel and Finance Committee held a hearing on Resolution 21-11, that comes to you with a favorable recommendation.
Do we have a presenter, if so, state your name and address.
Uh, yes, thank you, President White, Dan Parker, City Controller, office is on the 12th floor of the County City Building. Um, and yes, so this Resolution 21-11, um, is the culmination of uh, what, uh, we first actually presented to the Personnel and Finance Committee about a week and a half or two weeks ago, um, during their organizational meeting. Um, with respect to the, uh, first step in the process that we would like to undertake towards hiring an independent private CPA firm to perform the city's annual financial audit, um, using a process that's fully described in state law, in the law that, uh, that Clerk Jones just read out. Um, the, the, uh, independent CPA firm, hiring an independent CPA firm would replace the uh, current financial audit that is done by the Indiana State Board of Accounts, so every year we receive a financial statement audit uh, from the State Board of Accounts, and we would essentially just hire a firm to uh, perform the audit in their place, they would perform the audit in accordance with the guidelines established by the State Board, they would deliver the audit report to both the Common Council and to the State Board, so it would result in not only the same level of oversight from the State Board, but actually an increased level of, of oversight because we would have, uh, an independent CPA firm that would be doing this instead of, instead of the State Board. Um, a, a few weeks ago, when we met with Personnel and Finance, we, we sort of talked through, uh, the reasons why we're doing this and some of the benefits that we expect to see, uh, a- as we move down this path, if, if, uh, the Audit Committee comes together and actually recommends that we hire an independent firm. Um, that, those are mainly efficiency and time savings, um, as well as hiring a firm that really is used to dealing with a, an entity that is as large and as complex as the city. Um, if, if you think about, uh, the, the types of municipalities and other government entities that exist in Indiana, we're really not the norm, um, just given our size, uh, we're, we're the fourth largest city, uh, we're one of the largest, um, governments, we have a lot of funds, we have a lot of bonds, we, we do a lot of things that, that a lot of the smaller municipalities just don't do. And so, uh, the State Board of Accounts just were not their typical audit client, and so hiring an independent firm that is a little bit more, uh, experienced with, with organizations of our size is likely to, to see a little bit, uh, of efficiency and, and time savings, as well as a, a higher level of just oversight, uh, and a better check on me and my team as we put together our financial statements and making sure that, that those are presented fairly for our residents and for council. Um, in terms of what this resolution actually does and what the process would be if we wanted to, to move down the road of, uh, of hiring that independent firm, uh, this resolution establishes the Audit Committee, which is required under state statute. Uh, that, this resolution also appoints two of the committees' three members, so the third member would be uh, appointed by the mayor after the, the council appoints their two, establishes the committee and appoints their two members. Um, and this committee's role would be very simply to establish the criteria that would be used to, to select the audit firm, uh, to produce an RFP, to send out that RFP, um, solicit responses from various audit firms, and then evaluate those responses, um, and ultimately make a recommendation back to council to either select an audit firm and, and engage in, or in, uh, negotiate with that firm to, to enter into a contract with them for the, uh, audit engagement, or to, to not select an audit firm and say, we, we, we don't think that this would be beneficial for the city. So this resolution that's in front of you now only allows us to actually go through the process of soliciting those proposals, it doesn't actually commit us to, to hiring an external firm. There would be, after the Audit Committee meets, establishes those criteria, receives the proposals, there would be uh, us, another resolution that would come back with the Audit Committee's recommendation to say, um, you know, at that point whether, uh, we wanted to hire an external firm. In terms of timing, we're hoping to, to get the committee together, um, over the next several weeks, issue that RFP, uh, and then, uh, receive the proposals, uh, in the upcoming weeks and months. Uh, if we were to, to want to do this, um, and actually select an external or a private firm and opt out of the, the State Board of Accounts audit, uh, we would have to do that by June 30th of this year, so that is sort of our drop dead date in terms of timing, uh, if we wanna move forward. Uh, so this is just, like I said, the first step in the process, but I am happy to answer any questions that any councilmember has.
Councilmembers, do you have any questions? I do not see any hands up. If not, then we'll go to the public hearing portion. Clerk Jones, is there anyone waiting to speak in support of Resolution 21-11?
This is Dawn from Clerk's office, I do not see... I do not see anyone in the public express interest to, uh, speak in favor of 2111.
Do you see anyone waiting to speak in, um, o- opposition to Resolution 21-11? Do you see anyone waiting to speak in, um, op- opposition to Resolution 21 dash eleven?
No, I do not see anyone waiting to speak in opposition of twenty-one eleven.
Thank you. The public hearing portion is now closed. If council members do not have any comments at this time, I would like to entertain a motion regarding Resolution 21 dash eleven.
I'd like to move that, um, uh, Bill twenty, Resolution 21 eleven, uh, move for passage.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, it's been seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Resolution 21 dash eleven has been adopted. We'll now go to, uh, bills on first reading. Prior to, um, passing for first reading, I would need a motion to amend the agenda, uh, as has been outlined by, uh, Attorney Palmer. Uh, Mr. Palmer, would you like to just make some statements in regards to why we need to amend the agenda in terms of Bill's first reading?
Yes, thank you, President White. In order to, uh, pass what is now seventy-nine twenty-one, we have to pass seventy-eight twenty-one first. So the motion would be to amend the agenda to move, uh, seventy-eight twenty-one ahead of seventy-nine twenty-one, both in the list for first readings and also in, uh, in the meeting, uh, for the meeting two weeks from now for second and third readings.
Thank you. Does someone like to make that motion?
I make a motion to amend the agenda both for, uh, March eighth and for March twenty-second, placing Bill seventy-nine twenty-one after Bill seventy-eight twenty-one.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a, uh, motion, it's been seconded. All those in favor of the motion, Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Clerk Jones, will you please give Bill seventy-seven dash twenty-one a first reading?
Yes. Seventy-seven twenty-one, first reading on an alley vacation, north-south alley between North Mead Street and Eclipse, placed running north of West Moore Street to East-West Alley.
Thank you. I would like to entertain a motion to send Bill seventy-seven dash twenty-one to Public Works and Property Vacation Committee Meeting, second and third read and public hearing for March the twenty-second.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and it's been seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Will you please give a re, uh, first reading to Bill seventy-eight dash twenty-one?
Yes. Seventy-eight twenty-one, first reading on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating the proceeds of the sale of certain real estate to the City of South Bend Building Corporation.
Thank you. I would like to entertain a motion to send Bill seventy-eight dash twenty-one to, um, Personnel and Finance for Committee and, um, second and third reading set for March twenty-second.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, it's been seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Will you now give first reading to Bill seventy-nine dash twenty-one?
Yes. Seventy-nine twenty-one, first reading on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, approving of a form lease with the City of South Bend Building Corporation, authorizing and directing the execution of the lease and the publication of a notice of its execution, authorizing other actions in connection therewith in all matters related thereto.
Thank you. I would like to, uh, entertain a motion to send Bill seventy-nine dash twenty-one to Personnel and Finance Committee, set for Committee, um, Meeting, second and third reading, as well as public hearing for March the twenty-second.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and it's been seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Clerk Jones, you want to take a moment to catch your breath for?
I'm good, I can keep going.
Okay, then. Uh, will you please give first reading to Bill eighty dash twenty-one?
Yes. Eighty twenty-one, first reading on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, superseding and repealing ordinance number one zero four eight two dash sixteen to establish updated internal control standards.
Thank you. I would like to entertain a motion to send Bill eighty dash twenty-one to Personnel and Finance Committee for Committee Meeting, second and third reading and public hearing for March the twenty-second.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and it's been seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Will you now give first reading to Bill eighty-one dash twenty-one?
Yes. Eighty-one twenty-one, first reading on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, amending chapter eighteen, article one, section eighteen dash fifteen of the South Bend Municipal Code to clarify sidewalk accessibility for persons with disabilities near sidewalk cafes.
Thank you. I would like to entertain a motion to send Bill eighty-one dash twenty-one to Public Works and Property, um, Vacation for Committee Meeting, second and third reading, public hearing for March the twenty-second.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion, it's been seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Will you please give first reading to Bill eighty-two dash twenty-one?
Yes. Eighty-two twenty-one, first reading on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, repealing and replacing current chapter fourteen point five of the South Bend Municipal Code to address inclusive minority and women business enterprise development.
Thank you. I would like to entertain a motion to send Bill eighty-two dash twenty-one to Personnel and Finance Committee for Committee, uh, Meeting, uh, for second and third read and public hearing for March the twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one.
So moved.
And we have a motion. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion, it's been seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you so much. We're now moving to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business, council members? I do not see anyone. Uh, Councilmember Henry Davis?
Yeah, I wanted to, um, go back to the beginning of the meeting. I did speak with the members from, um, Washington High School. They got their wires crossed, um, with a meeting with the commissioners. And so, language was the barrier and so the dates in their mind became the sixteenth and not today, but they are clear on what happened and what's going on. So they will, um, be here for the next council meeting.
Thank you so much. And that would be the March twenty-second meeting, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much. We appreciate that update. Is there any new business, council members? Any, uh, council member, uh, Rachel Thomas Morgan?
Yes, President White, um, I'd just like to briefly report on the transition commite- committee, uh, transition team. Uh, to remind everyone, um, the transition team was, uh, charged to put together a timeline and a plan for, um, moving into, uh, to public meetings. Um, the transition team comprises council members Troy Warner, uh, Sharon McBride, myself with Clerk Jones and Attorney Bob Palmer. We met on Friday and, um, the, uh, the initial plan and timeline is that we would, um, we would look to our, uh, first meeting in April, April twelfth, um, to allow those to, um, attend in person for those who feel comfortable, uh, continue to allow those who want to meet virtually to do so. Um, to pilot that in, in, uh, April, see how that goes, potentially to, um, to, uh, move into May with, um, potential, uh, city heads or personnel coming to give, uh, presentations and then, um, in the summer, um, to, um, allow the public. Uh, I will be, um, uh, I'm finishing up some notes right now, um, and then we'll be, um, sending that along to the rest of the transition team just for a final look before we send that to the rest of the council for some feedback. Um, obviously, we have, um, um, kind of more details to spell out, but just wanted to share with you, um, what that, uh, what that looks like at a, at a high level.
Thank you so much. We appreciate that update and, uh, we look forward to, uh, receiving, uh, the note and the recommendation from the transition team. We'll now move to Clerk Jones.
Um, yes, I just wanted to go review some dates for the applicant, applicant screening for the CBC, the CRB Committee. Um, and I have four dates in mind and I would like for council members to review these dates and, and get back with me. That would be, uh, this coming Thursday, which is March eleventh, from four to six, as well as not in addition to, but or Friday from four to six. And that would be, uh, March twelfth, or we can go to the next week, which would be next Thursday from four to six, which is March eighteenth, and next Friday, um, from four to six, which would be March nineteenth. So any one of those four dates, we will, uh, send you the applications this week, preferably tomorrow, and, um, so that you can review them and then we can have an executive session.
Okay. And, okay, well, um, so you're asking council members to respond back to see if we are available for March the eleventh, from four to six, March twelfth, four to six, eighteenth and nineteenth?
Right. Any, any one of those dates. I'm not asking for all four dates.
Okay. And then this will be, uh, executive session?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, then, thank you so much. Appreciate that. Is there any other, um?
Yes.
Uh, council member Troy Warner? And then, I'm sorry, followed by council member Henry Davis. I think I saw your hand up too, council member Davis. Council member Troy Warner? Oh. He's muted.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I, Mr. Davis had his hand up first if he'd like to go.
You're more than welcome to go ahead, Troy.
So my question, okay, thank you, sir. My question is for Attorney Palmer and regarding, uh, um, what confidentiality there may be with these applications. Um, that answer doesn't have to be given now, but, uh, um, I, I would like to know that, uh, when we get the applications.
Councilmember Warner, um, anything that takes place during an executive session would be confidential and not, uh, released to the public. So at this point, uh, until we go beyond, uh, discussion of the executive session, it would remain confidential.
Thank you, um, Attorney Palmer. I'll go to Councilmember Henry Davis. I apologize, I didn't see your hand.
It's fine, it happens. There is like, like two things that I want to, uh, bring up, there's three, actually. Um, we just had a loss over here in the South Park Neighborhood Association, our president, uh, elder pomp, Dennis Pomp, uh, transitioned.
What?
I said, yeah, and so I just wanted to, I mean, the only reason why I'm saying it in this public forum is because I know we've interfaced with him, uh, considerably, uh, as a council over the last several years. And, um, I just wanted to, like, notify everyone that, you know, that did happen. It, we have, it's a, it's a big loss, it's a huge loss. It breaks my heart, but, you know, we don't get it forever, so, um, he did transition and so, um, just FYI. The next thing was, was like a segue, uh, when we were talking about getting back down to council. I did send an email out to, um, a few members of the council, um, and was asking about vaccinations and I'm seeing that teachers are, like, getting vaccinated because the kids are coming back, um, uh, four days a week. I, I don't know, uh, how this can be, uh, worked out or how we should work it out, but, um, our public service workers, you know, are just the same as some of these teachers, uh, and I, I don't know if we have the, the capabilities, uh, and I think that we should investigate to get the same type of, uh, treatment so that, uh, all of us are vaccinated. So if we do choose to be back downtown, we don't have a problem. I saw the CDC today released a report and said if you have been vaccinated, you don't have to wear a mask in order, you have to, like, have that six, uh, feet social distancing requirement, but that means that you have to be vaccinated. And so, uh, if we get vaccinated, then, uh, we are somewhat back to normal. So I, I would, you know, push that off, um, to, uh, to a higher level. I'll send another email out to see if, in fact, we could, um, get some of the same, uh, priority treatment as the teachers have to be getting, uh, because we do need it because we deal with the public at a very high level. And if we're going to be open back up for business, we definitely will need it as well. My last thing is that I did send an email out yesterday because I had received a voicemail message that was a bit racist, very racist. I've become desensitized to some of these things because of the things that have gone through my entire life. But I, I do recognize that when people do take the time out to do something like that, they're usually serious. And it could also go to a whole nother level. That could be anything to be raping you verbally or trying to be violent towards you. I've been, I've been a part of both scenes. So, I did send it out to my council colleagues, thinking I would get a response. I did speak with Lori and also President White about it. No one else seems to think that that was, you know, disgusting. But understand, you know, we do work public jobs. I work public jobs. I'm not like saying this because I am like nervous or scared or anything. But it would be great if we do recognize that these threats are out there. And we just got, we just finished watching the insurrection at a Capitol building in Washington, D.C. So, if we don't understand, you know, how serious this is, then we are clearly, you know, deaf and blind, or we just don't care. So, I hope that, you know, there will be some sensitivity put towards this and some priority as well. And have a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you as well. Councilwoman Lori Hammond. Followed by Councilwoman Sheila Nuskowski.
Thank you, President White. This is in relation to the vaccinations. I'm just wondering if anyone has reached out to Dr. Fox or to Dr. Bob at the Health Department to see if there is any way to move this forward. I know I personally have not, but I'm just wondering if anyone has.
I'm not aware at this point, but I do know that there are other individuals within the city that have reached out to both those physicians. And we'll follow up with that as well. I know Councilwoman Sharon McBride, you've had some conversations in terms of working with the COVID committee?
Yes, I did. And I don't know if like with the law enforcement, trying to see if there can be some priority. I did have some conversation to see where we would fall, but I know that things have been opening up for different demographics. And hopefully, they are working toward to get the council vaccinated with some of the other essential workers.
Thank you.
I haven't heard anything specific about the council since then, but I did reach out to them.
And I will follow up as well, working with you on that, as well as Councilmember Henry Davis. Council, I mean Clerk Jones, I think you had your hand up before Councilman Kenneth Lee.
Yes, I had my hand up because I had reached out to the Health Department as well, probably a couple of months ago to see as we opened up, could this office and council members receive their vaccine? And I was told that because of the limited amount, and maybe it's different now that they have approved more, but because of the limited amount, they had to stick to the eligibility of people according to their age and what's posted. Otherwise, they wouldn't have enough. But I can reach out again and see if they will make provisions for that again. But I just wanted you to know, I had reached out a while ago.
Thank you so much for that update. Councilmember Kenneth Lee, I did see your hand up.
Yes. Thank you, President White. I just saw Dr. Bob today and asked him about it. And for everyone that knows that if you're, if you're fifty, you can get, you can get vaccinated now. And he told me that probably by next week or by two weeks, it'll be forty. So, I'm still in the forty group. So...
Well, don't tell us, please, okay?
But he, he, he said those, those, that people that are, that are in their fifties can get vaccinated now. And that forties will probably be next week or the week after. So...
Thank you so much. I do not see anyone else who has their hand up. We'll now go to privilege of the floor. Clerk Jones, is there anyone waiting to speak under privilege of the floor? I do see one hand up and that is wishing to speak under privilege of the floor. We do ask that you state your name and address, and you have five minutes to speak on a subject that is not or has not been discussed on the agenda. And I see the first name is Kat. Will you please state your name and address, please? And you have five minutes.
Hi, yes. It's Catherine Redding. And it's four one eight Lamont Terrace, South Bend, Indiana. And I just wanted to see if I could gain privy of the council and ask a question on committee structure, adding committee structure in regards to ad hoc under the public safety, Board of Public Safety regarding lead, lead awareness, lead outreach, lead testing, making check and balance, accountability structure for producing data on testing and as well as, as well as lead abatement. Also, I wanted to address singularly Kenneth Lee, as well as council member Tomas and Sheila Nuskowski. I wanted to touch base with you guys because there's been several conversations, community conversations regarding lead. And the community wants to know, because your names were brought off, brought up quite often. I'm aware that council member President Lee is actually doing some work with Heidi Beddinger. And this was brought to my attention by Ms. Beddinger. And there was some discussions about council member Tomas, as well as Nuskowski. And I just wanted to be sure that we were not overworking ourselves with things that are already being done by council, current council members. I'd like to actually, if we could, engage in dialect to make sure that we're crossing our t's and not in our i's as we begin to think about community safety and lead awareness. Just making sure that we're all working together in this partnership to actually see real change, legitimate change in our communities. We know that since its track since teen, actually nineteen, has been underfunded. When it comes to lead, they've been undertested, and they're the most impoverished. So, I'd like to extend an invitation to the council to, first and foremost, see if there be at all any purpose and value to adding a committee, an ad hoc on to, for the commission or a commission for reporting public safety. That way, we can make sure that we are being intentional this time around with lead. So, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll leave that question open for council. And hopefully, yeah, invitation for latest development and conversation and moving this lead, this injustice forward. Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Redding. And there have been a number of conversations in regards to the impact of lead. We did have a committee meeting in regards to that. So that I'm going to ask Councilmember Lee, Kenneth Lee, as well as Councilwoman Sheila Nuskowski, as well as Rachel Thomas, to, to reach out to you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Henry Davis?
Yeah, I want to try to clarify some of that because I was on a phone call and, because I was invited. And I told the group of people that were on the phone and on top of the young lady from Notre Dame, I think Heidi, Heidi is her name. I'm maybe getting it wrong. But I did announce to them that there was a way of pushing all this together, and that was through an ad hoc committee that meets outside of the confines of the regular committee structure for purposes of defining actionable goals and points. And I explained that to them so that they would understand that if this is going to be a community thing, that would probably be one of the better ways of getting it done. There was a report that was read from a young man. I can't remember his name right now because it's getting late for me. But he was able to pinpoint certain things that I had never even heard before about lead and where it was really at, and just some things that were very educational to me and very fulfilling. And I just thought those things would be a very start, a great starting point for anyone that is interested in eradicating lead here in this community. So, I'm not sure how this is going to build. But I do know that the committee structure president allows or will give a planning power to an ad hoc committee to, so it can be developed and so that those things can be worked on, so that it will have a home instead of just like depending on this council member, that council member, this group outside, this group or this group or this council person. It gives it a life of its own. So, it can be organized and hopefully, some outcomes are made.
And if I can say this, that currently, there's no one working full-time on lead in the city. And actually, I believe that her name is Liz, has just stepped into the position of pushing the grant hood applications through. But those applications do expire. So, there has to become, there has to be a streamlined process developed in order to see real change around lead.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else waiting under privilege of the floor? I do not see anyone. If not, at this time, the March eighth meeting of the common council is adjourned. Thank you. Everybody have a good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Bye-bye.
Good night. Thanks, President White.
Good night. Thank you.